Good evening. It is Monday, June 24th, and I call the Maple Plains City Council meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I could just add one new business item. It'll be Resolution 19-0624-03, which is pertaining to a resolution providing an extension for Elam Care slash Augustana Care for an extended time for recording the final plat for the gateway of Maple Plain, generally located at 1425 Baker Park Road.
Okay, so we will add Resolution 19-0624-03 to new business. Any other additions? Okay, with that, looking, all in favor of approving the agenda with that addition?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Alright, motion passes. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing none. We will move on to consent agenda on that this evening. We have June Accounts Payable and Payment Request Number Six for Northdale Construction. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, but with the, can we pull the payment requests for questions?
Yes, we can. Alright.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Fay to approve the consent agenda with June Accounts Payable. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember Cahill, Payment Request Number Six, Northdale Construction. I'm going to turn that over to you.
I just had a question about the jobs that were on there I thought were the ones that we were getting for free because in exchange for not charging on the late fee for late completion.
The only project that they completed that was for the, for some of their delinquent time was that sewer structure that they reconstructed on Main Street downtown, right across from McGarry's. That should be completely free.
And what was the value of that one? Do we know off the top?
Twenty, between 25 and 30,000.
Okay.
So I didn't get anything sent to me directly for that, like a quote or anything, because it's being done for free. But that's what they typically run for.
And that was not in this, correct?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't recall that in the report.
The items on here are just the items that they completed this spring.
Reference the warning lights.
Yeah, no, there's one thing on Accounts Payable that we did have to pay that I didn't want to pay, but really got handcuffed on, and that was we had to pay for traffic warning lights and all the barricades and everything that had to be brought in. And that was originally going to be controlled by Hennepin County. Since it's their road, they were going to actually provide that traffic. They, what ended up happening there is they said, hey, you've got a failing structure here. You need to fix that and do that quickly, and we'll provide traffic control. Well, we got on it very quickly. We got it all hammered out with the contractor within two weeks, and that project was done. But the day before the project happened, they called and said, we're not providing any, we're not providing any help in closing off this county road. And we're like, seriously? And they backed out of that deal. So we ended up having to contract down. We did have to pay for that.
Caitlin, that was $3,400, which if it's a $25,000 to $30,000 job, we're looking at, you know, 15% of the cost was covered by us in traffic control. So I talked to Bobby about that before.
Yep.
Is it ever common in situations like that that cities would borrow from one another?
That's usually a per instance thing. You know, if you have to do something, it's all, it's all subcontract out to traffic control. Companies like, you know, safety signs and warning lights and stuff, so it's common. And that's a, I'm not, I'm a little familiar with the project, but it's a, it sounds about right in the price range for that type of work, especially on a major road.
Okay. Well, and then last minute, too, you can have a lot of options, so.
Correct.
Bobby, what do we have left on this project by way of retainage and punch lists?
So we're still holding, we're holding 3% retainage on the project, which amounts to $41,546. Punch list, they are working through it. The last I saw, I didn't, got a brief chance to look at it last week, Thursday, and almost all the items were checked out. So there's still some outstanding items, and I don't know exactly what the other, but most of them are taken care of.
Alan, I hope you can answer a couple of my questions on this, too. And I hope this to be more open-ended for discussion than accusatory, which I would do today.
Okay. I'll take it first, though.
Would you assume that this pay request is the second to the last pay request, which means their next pay request will be the final pay request?
Without knowing a ton about the project, I would have to say no, if I was going to bet my lunch money on it.
Okay.
Alan, that's the third time you've said, I don't have a lot of knowledge about this project.
Well, Alan's been-
Did you not brief yourself on this before you came here?
I was recently brought into this, this helping Dan out. This is new to me. I am familiar with the project.
Thank you.
But as far as the ins and outs of it, you know, I'm not, it's not something that I'm, you know, I don't know every detail of the project, I guess.
Yeah, Dan has been using Alan. Alan probably got brought in around town a couple weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah, so I previously worked on the Bud Avenue project, and I've been working behind the scenes with Dan on miscellaneous projects throughout my several years that I've done with Stan Tech. I personally did not work directly on this current project, so, but I am familiar with it, however. But as far as the details go, I couldn't speak directly to a specific detail. And I could talk with Dan if he had specific questions you were looking for. I could definitely relay those back, and we could answer them.
Well, if the question, if we have to wait for the questions to get answered, will that hold up the pay request?
If we don't approve it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a couple of more questions. In Dan's narrative, in the second bullet point, he says, "Payment request reflects work completed up to June 19th of this year, but not including the total quantity of some items that still need final measurements and confirmation." I don't know who felt it was acceptable to request a pay request of 100 and, brief me here, I'm sorry, it was 143,000 or something like that?
160.
$143,000. And without, at this stage of the game, this is six months' worth of, worth of items, that if they're asking for money, I, I'm uncomfortable with them not having everything to date full and complete as far as confirm that the measurements and quantities and stuff are accurate. And the reason I ask that is, when you look at this, there are certain things, and I believe Mike or Caitlin might have alluded to it, there are items in here that we're paying for that are things that clearly were done last year. Because the water, there was no water main work from January 1 until now. There was no storm sewer work-
Sure.
-from January 1 until now. But we're getting numbers on it. And Bobby, you know, Alan, you aren't aware of this, but this has been my nemesis with Dan, because this is, this, this, this project has not gone great. And there's a lot of repair and repeat work, and I just want to make sure that we're not paying for anything twice. They, they do it, they bill it, it shows up, there's a pay request, and we pay for it. And I'm afraid that's might, what, that might be what's happening here. In addition, if there's still items to be confirmed, why don't, why, if we're going to June 19th, why don't we have a confirmation on quantities and items up to June 1st?
Well, I can answer a little bit on this. And that is, whenever a project of this magnitude occurs, then there's always a conversation when it comes to the amount of quantities used. So they give their bid, their bid, and we say, okay, that's great, and move forward with the project. There's always some discussion between the engineers and the contractors over certain things that happen. For us, this project was delayed, or didn't get completely completed last fall. And so some work, including that water main, was done late in the winter last year. But there was still a debate on the amount of quantities that Tanner helped negotiate before he left with Stan Tech, because he was there and watched the entire project, and he knew all of the material that they-
I'm going to interrupt you. Tanner is gone?
Tanner has left. That is correct. So-
Bobby, I think the point here is, John asked the question, what's left? And Alan, you alluded to that this, it's punch list items.
Correct.
And that a majority of those punch list items have been done since that. That would lead me to believe that the next and final payment would be made next month, assuming all the punch list gets finished.
But like I said, as a-
And now we're not quite sure of that, because the measurements might have been wrong.
Well, if there's still some, I mean, obviously, we try to limit the number of pay requests, but if there's still, the contractor, we're required to pay the contractor every 30 days from, you know, when they do the work. And, you know, I would know some stuff wasn't done this year. However, so there may have been some negoti, I'm, like I said, I'm just speculating here. There's probably some negotiations with outstanding items, and they come to a resolution on those items, so they add it to this pay request. Since they did a lot of work, big thing is they did the wear course paving and a lot of the other stuff. They, these subs need to get, they want to get paid. So that's why, so they said, okay, we'll hold it off to these, this last pay request, and we'll get these other miscellaneous items that we, that are still outstanding from last year, and they threw it on this one. And there's still ongoing negotiations. There, I mean, that's, this like Bobby said, with a, with a project of this magnitude, there's, there's always, you have to, it doesn't, it doesn't just happen overnight. Sometimes a contractor will say, we did 100 feet, and our Tanner or somebody will come back, and they say, no, you did 90, you know, and then they have to go out and re-measure, and it takes some time. So what they do is they want to get the pay request pushed through, and they're still, those are just left to resolve. They don't want to hang up $100,000 pay request because of $5,000 worth of work that they're still negotiating.
Understandable. And then my last question, and this is, I, I, I throw this out more for debate to find out if I'm the only one that feels this way. But if this is not the second to last pay request, I don't know if anyone noticed this, but you took, Alan, what, what is the reasoning, reasoning behind retainage?
So retainage is supposed to basically cover any remaining work. Let's just say we had a pro, let's just say there was a driveway that didn't get fixed, right, and it's messed up. And we're still arguing with the contractor. We're going to say, you damaged this driveway. And the contractor says, nope, Mr. Johnson damaged his own driveway. I'm not fixing it. And we can say, well, we're going to fix it our, ourselves, and we will take it out of your retainage if you don't come and do it. That's the reasoning for holding the retainage.
Right.
But usually, we reduce it when we know that, okay, there's not, we like to hold a dollar amount that we feel that could cover the remaining amount of work on the project. So we'll reduce it, especially with a, you know, a total contract value of, you know, almost $1.5 million. You know, they don't want to hold 15% on that, because that's a lot of money that, you know, when there's not that much work left on the project.
Well, it's, it's been 5% since day one.
Or five, I mean, 5%, sorry.
And, and there's another reason why anyone would, would retain money or put money into escrow, and that is to ensure that a contractor makes it back in a, makes it back, number one-
Right.
-to, to, to complete a punch list or complete a project. And not only that, do it in a timely fashion.
Right.
Because if the retainage is such that they aren't penalized, per se, they may slide something in, in front of you, and then we get into the same process that we did last year, and things just keep getting pushed down, and we have no control. So what you've done is, it's customary to reduce the retainage in the second to last pay request, which means you just told me earlier that you do not believe this is the second to last-
And I may have misspoke, it could have been, but it's just, I'm just saying, sometimes large projects like this, sometimes it-
I would say this, though. I think that, John, I think, I think you've made a good point on this. Looking at this and looking at the project that one has left, there are a few punch list items that need to be done. We do have $41,500 on retainage.
Is that adequate, Bobby?
I do think-
I guess that's what I wanted to know.
That's what I think is adequate. What I would suggest-
You and Alan think that's adequate?
Yep, I do.
That's fine.
What I do think is, would be helpful is that in the future, too, maybe what we can do is set up, if we have this level of questions, an individual sit down with Dan, maybe outside, and get a better understanding of this, and then bring back some higher level questions to the council if we do have them. Just my opinion there. So, I just think-
I feel bad for Alan here. He's been helping out for a few weeks-
Well, I agree. And I, I didn't know, I didn't know-
Bombarded here.
-Dan wouldn't be here, and if, if Caitlin hadn't pulled it off-
Dan will be here later on tonight.
-the consent agenda, I was going to pull it off-
Yeah.
... because-
And I think enough of us had questions that I'm not sure doing that individually would be helpful, but maybe at a workshop versus-
Well, I just think offline conversation.
Just so everybody knows, I'm, I'm very familiar with projects of this and significantly larger. So I mean, I'm, this, this is right up my wheelhouse, so I can answer a lot of these standard, you know, questions. But it comes down to details, specific details regarding this particular project. I may not, I don't, I'm not intimately familiar with it. However, like I said, just general construction questions regarding, you know, completion times and pay requests, I can speak to. And, you know, maybe this is the last one, you know, the second to last one, I'm not sure. I'm just guessing with a project of this size, they're going to want one more, and then we'll hold. And personally, I wouldn't want to close a project out until it's 100% right. So we may reduce it down to 1% and close out in October and do the final payment, when I know that all the grass is grown, and there's some ditch that doesn't need to be fixed or whatever. I'd really hesitate closing this thing out unless I was 100% confident that it's going to be, that it's done, till we don't have, you know-
Well, I think what you're also hearing, Alan, is that there's a general distrust by this council in this particular contractor. This has not gone well.
Yeah, and I've heard-
We've got a good, at the end of the day, we'll get a good product out of this. That's why.
Right. And I've heard that, I know there were some problems last fall. Like I said, I wasn't on the project, I wasn't really involved. And I understand that, and I understand the frustrations. I just want to, you know, reiterate that, you know, generally, this level of difficulty probably isn't standard, but however, it's not out of the ordinary to have issues that come across, especially with some of these smaller contractors. I was on a project in Maple Grove last year that we were, our, we couldn't get, we didn't not, we did not finish a significant amount of the work that we were supposed to do last year that was due to weather. So sometimes those are outside of the, beyond the contractor's control, and we do the best we can to get it done. So I guess that's what.
Let me ask one more question, and then I promise to put this to bed. So Dan's documentation was drafted on June 19th. It's the 24th. So prior to the 19th, Dan was claiming that there were some items that still needed final measurement and confirmation. Instead of waiting until the next pay request, where we need to differentiate, because we will never be able to differentiate what, what, what wasn't finally measured or confirmed or added, when, when will you, when will Stan Tech know and be able to get to Bobby a punch list that says, these are the several things that, that Dan was referring to as far as that didn't have a final count?
So the punch list and the final count are two different things.
I'm talking specifically about this, but not including the total quantity of some items that still need final measurement and confirmation.
It's a bit in the back.
Are you, are you saying that is the punch list?
No, I'm saying the, a punch list is different than the final quantities. A punch list is deficient work or outstanding work from the project, and it may not, it may be related to the final quantities, but it definitely is a different document. So our file, we, there may be certain items within the pay requests that are not finalized, and we're still trying to hash them out with the contractor and agree on quantities. Now, there's also another list that, that Tanner and Dan have been working on, is deficient work and outstanding work. So especially deficient work, that's most of the punch list. But there may be some items where, hey, they didn't do this, so you throw it on the punch list. So it's, it's two different-
Maybe I can simplify. Instead of deficient work and punch list items, there's 160 items on this-
Pay request.
100 on this, what do you, not the pay request, but the, the documentation or the pay request. I'm not quite sure what you refer to.
I guess the, whatever, the contractor's request for-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 160 items.
Yes.
Is there going to be a handful of things on there tomorrow that you're going to make a confirmation with the contractor? That these are the three things or four things that, that I didn't report accurately. You'll confirm it, and that will end up on the next pay request.
So I guess I want to, I want to say that anything paid on here has been confirmed with the contractor and agreed upon. If it's not agreed upon, it would not be paid included within this pay request. It's not, they may, I can only speak from past experience, let's just say they're requesting 100. We're saying there's 90, and we'll say, we'll pay you the 90, but I'm not going to finish, I'm not going to pay you that remaining amount until we double, if we have to go, we'll double check and confirm some quantities. We always refer back to the lesser number. So then if they, you know, it's, it's not like you have to, we have to-
It's not all or nothing. It's you pay them on the 90, and then they have to show you documentation-
Correct.
-to, to, to, to get the additional-
Correct. It's not, I'm not, we would never pay a contractor, if they're saying it's 100, and we're, we don't, we don't agree on numbers, we would never pay them that number.
So it might be something as simple as comparing the quantities here compared to the quantities next time, to find out if there's any discrepancy between, to find out if that 90 that you referred to actually went up to 100. That would be an item that needed additional confirmation.
Correct. And then they would, then it would highlight themselves on the next pay request, and that's when I said, there may not be the final, because let's just say this next one, you know, let's say the next one's 20 grand. I have no idea. I'm just, I'm picking a number. Let's just say it's 20 grand, but they want to get paid that 20 grand, and they don't want to wait till October to get the rest of their retainage back. And at that point in time, we may reduce their retainage down again, saying, okay, you did the punch list, but I'm still going to hold 1% because I'm still concerned that Mrs. Johnson's grass looks bad, or whatever. So, and as far as the punch list goes, we could provide the, the documentation for review by staff or whoever wants to look at it. Like I said, I don't have a, I don't have a copy of it. I've seen it. I reviewed it shortly with Dan last week, Thursday, but not enough where I would know specific items or how much is actually left. All I know is there's a lot more items on there that had check marks on it as uncompleted than ones that were left open. And I don't know which ones, those open ones are. My guess, it has mostly, especially at a project at this stage, it has mostly to do with restoration or, you know, final, just final, everything you get to touch and feel. You know what I mean?
Well, and, and am I missing something? If I look at one of your pages, the original contract was 1.446.
Correct.
We added $23,000.
Correct.
That means it turned out about 1.47.
Yep.
We paid them about, or they've submitted things for 138.
No, that's, well, I guess that's the-
Value completed to date.
Correct. That's what, that's what we've agreed upon, and that's how, that's how much.
Right. Which would imply there's still $80,000 worth of work sitting out there.
Not necessarily. If you look at the-
Up to.
Not necessarily. Because if you look at the quantities, so if you look at the individual quantities that are on here, these are our estimated quantities prior to the start of the project. We do the best we can to try to get the quantities as close as we can, so it gives the most accurate representation of the project budget to the city. Now, some items is, if I don't say it's our best estimate, you know, it's, you don't know. Like, for example, if you look at sod, we are grossly under on sod. But some projects, you go way over, because you don't know how much is going to get, be disturbed. We try to do the best, and it really depends on how good of a job sometimes the contractor does. So we have a, we use a guide to get, to basically estimate our quantities, and sometimes we're way under, and sometimes we're way less. So if you look at these, there's some, there's quite a few quantities on here, when I was looking at it, are actually significantly less, and they won't go, they won't change. Now, there are some that are over, but my understanding is there was some added work that was, that was completed this year that was never part of the project, but it was discussed, and it was decided to add it. So you'll see some of those quantities are over, but there's still significant quantities, one of the quantities that are under. And if you look at them, they won't be, they won't, can't add to it. It's not, you know, I can't, I have to find a specific one, but like, for example, if you look at, you know, four-inch drain tile, that's almost eight bucks a foot. We're 400 feet under. We're not going to add any four-inch drain tile on this project. So that number will not change. You know, you just have to go through line by line and pick, pick which, you know, and review the individual items.
We've talked about this. There's, there's ebb and flow in, in this. I understand that. But I guess, and I'll reiterate this, because I made this in two previous pay requests. You take, for example, line item number 11, remove Batuminus driveway.
Yep.
Now, there is a situation where we are down.
Correct.
You originally estimated, and they put a value at 461 square yards.
Yep.
To date, we've only used, or we've only, we've only done 241.
Correct.
Of which 27 are on the most current-
Correct.
-pay request. And what I want to make sure is, they did a crappy job of doing some Batuminus driveway work, which has to be taken out and put back in.
So that wouldn't be paid.
And I want to make sure that when you come in with the next pay request, that you're not saying, we need 67 additional square yards because we paid for it, it was inferior, and we're paying for it again.
Well, I will have to say, there's a caveat that, that maybe this is an item that wasn't agreed upon, and we said, we measured 27, and they said, there's 50. And we're saying, we're only going to pay you for 27 until we can measure the other, the last outstanding item. So, yes, I agree with you that if there's deficient work, which should be included on a punch list, it should be, in my experience, there's no reason why it wouldn't be. But if, if it's not, we'll definitely add it, if there's specific ones. But that, in my experience, would not be something that they'd be paid for. That's something they have to remove and replace on their own dime. But like I said-
Correct.
But there may be something out there that this particular item, maybe we didn't agree on quantities. So I'm, I can't promise you that there's not going to be, that there's going to be a zero on this item next pay request. Just, like I said, I'm not super, I'm not intimately familiar with this. I don't, I don't have our quantity record book. I don't have it in-
It's a pretty, pretty, pretty good chance that they're done removing Batuminus driveway still, right?
No, I, I would, I would agree with you, but I'm saying there may be, maybe they didn't agree on quantities. There might, this might be an outstanding item that's not agreed upon yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Move on.
All right. Councilmember Cahill, you had pulled it. Were all your questions answered?
Just to clarify, the change order, all the projects were not related to Howard and Independence, correct? Those were separate ones we had them do? Okay.
Hearing no further questions. Thank you, Alan, for taking the time to explain that to us. Looking for a motion to approve Payment Request Number Six to Northdale Construction.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Alright, motion carries. Next item of business are administrative reports. Those have all been submitted as written. Looking for a motion to accept the City Engineer June Month Report, the City Planner June Month Report, West Hennepin Public Safety May Monthly Report, Public Works June Month Report, and City Administration June Monthly Report. Looking for a motion to accept those reports?
I will make the motion to accept the administrative reports as written, A, B, C, D, and E.
Alright. Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the reports as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. New business this evening. Our first item of new business is Resolution 19-0624-01, approving the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I'm going to turn that over to our planner.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Before you tonight is the, the kind of final approval of the City Council for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan before it's submitted officially to the Metropolitan Council. And so all comprehensive plans are subject to the review and approval of Metropolitan Council. We've gotten it to a point where we will submit it formally to Metropolitan Council. We fully anticipate we will get comments back, and we will be back in front of you at some point with a version that addresses the comments that were provided by the Metropolitan Council. So what we're asking for tonight is to consider approval of the Comprehensive Plan subject to Metropolitan Council review and approval. I'll kind of go over a couple of highlights, put that on.
Can you turn it on?
Nope, I'm sorry. Couple of quick highlights on the Comprehensive Plan. So this process we've gone through has been just over a year. It's been an iterative process with the community, with council, with the Planning Commission, as well as staff, to try to put together a plan that represents the city's projected growth through the year 2040. And so, as we noted really early on in this project, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan that was adopted by the City of Maple Plain, by and large, had not been realized due to the major downturn in the economy that occurred just about the time you adopted the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Because of that, the, a lot of the planning that was done at that point was still relevant or, or is still valid today. or, or is still valid today. And so, with that, um, we took that information and really tried to just fine tune that information, plug in some of the numbers that we were getting as related to the newest projections, um, from the Metropolitan Council for population and households, and then try to identify, um, and then, and then address some of the, uh, new elements that the Metropolitan Council is required to be included in the comprehensive plan. So, I'll touch on, uh, really just a couple of highlights. So, within the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we talk about all the time as it relates to the plan is the, um, land use, future land use map of the city, and this map is, um, illustrative of what the city is guiding its land use for the next twenty years, or over the next twenty years. Am I, am I getting the light quick? If I could. We had to do that at planning, too. Uh, so you can get a better shot of what this really looks like. The city, um, looks very similar, th- this map looks very similar to the map that we adopted in the twenty thirty plan, but I'm gonna highlight a couple of the changes. So, one of the things that, oh, come on. No? My little pen doesn't like me today. His arms, he was pushing, but I know. Dan would, uh, have it back up for me.
Turn it to her.
Huh? I don't know. It's coming on, but you guys can't see it, huh? Okay. I'm gonna walk up and just talk really loud, just so you can try it real quick. So, a couple of areas that we, that we focused on, on the comprehensive plan. One is this stretch right along County Road nineteen. Um, there was two areas that we had guided previously, one for industrial, one for Office Park. We've reguided those areas to a mixed-use designation, and then similarly, south of the railroad tracks on the, uh, west side of County Road nineteen, we reguided some of this property from a higher-density residential to a mixed-use, and I'll talk about that when I go back to the diocese. And then, we also just looked at some of this area in between Main and Independence, and then some of the properties that ran, uh, along, um, County Road nineteen or twenty-nine. Those were, uh, the, the kinda highlights of that. One office park was a use that was identified previously that we just hadn't seen anybody, um, latch on to, and we weren't getting much traction as a city for anybody thinking about redeveloping those properties that were residential into office parks specifically. We found that it was a very, um, narrowly focused land use district, and we wanted to provide more flexibility in potential land uses, that were also then complementary to the mixed-use downtown, which is kinda the center core of the city's downtown. And, um, in reguiding those areas along County Road nineteen on both the west and east sides, it allows the city to have, I think, a really nice transition, plus somewhat of a gateway from the south coming into the city, um, that is going to have more of a, uh, complimentary appearance, um, to those other, uh, land uses in that area. Similarly, on the, in, on the area that I pointed out, in between Independence and Main Street, that area we had, uh, in the last go-around identified as a, an area that could potentially see mixed-use, um, almost townhome-type development or redevelopment of those properties. We did a more, um, in-depth review of those properties and a little bit of an analysis as it related to, one, is it financially feasible to buy a single-family home in that area, tear it down and put up a duplex? Given the prices, the condition of the properties, and the size of the properties, um, I just don't think it's in this planning horizon, but that may be something that changes as your gateway area evolves and maybe as some of that develops, that there would be an opportunity that the market would maybe even support that type of redevelopment. So, we pared back that R two designation on those properties, um, to try to just be more realistic with, with what is actually there right now. And then, um, with that, we also expanded the Gateway District north of Main Street up to Independence, um, for the property that's just south of, uh, Veterans Memorial Park and this facility. And so, we tried to identify that there are some larger properties in there, and those properties may be able to realize some redevelopment, and that it would kinda flow together with some of the other development that's already occurring. So, this map is really representative of a lot of what the plan, um, uh, detail supports. It supports the city being able to realize this plan by the year twenty forty, um, as it relates to sewer water, traffic, transportation, um, and then parks. We talk about this plan, and then we provide kinda the supporting documentation as to how we would be able to realize that. One of the things that I wanted to note in the twenty forty plan, and this is something we've talked about, um, as a city, is the Highway twelve plan. Um, as you may or may not recall, in the last plan's go-around, we had three options that we presented for Highway twelve, essentially for access management, and then how we were gonna see, um, kinda cross-traffic and intersection management relating to Highway twelve. We've refined that down to represent what we think is the current vision of the city, which is, uh, the close, closing of Bud Street from a north-south perspective at Highway twelve, and then a new sing- singleized intersection at County Road nineteen or Main Street and Highway twelve. And so, this plan is now reflective of it, of that, and I think that's significant because now we've got kind of just one, uh, picture, one vision for what it is that we would, we would be doing in any kind of a redevelopment scenario. And then, as funding occurs or changes happen to Highway twelve, we've got, from the city perspective, uh, kind of a unified picture of what that would look like. So, those are my, um, kind of key highlights as it relates to the plan. I'd be happy to go into as much or as little detail as you want. I will note, there is still some minor, uh, what I call minor, um, uh, table of content and, um, just some kinda final edits to our mapping and our figures. We're kinda waiting until the very, very, very end, and we get all the comments addressed before we page number everything, and you'll see some X's in all of the, all of the mapping, uh, but that's gonna be, uh, finalized here shortly and then submitted with everything complete. We did get comments back, uh, after we sent the plan out. Primarily, the comments that we had to address were related to the watershed comments that were made, both by Pioneer Sarah Creek and Minnehaha Creek. Uh, the city did receive, um, just a few other sets of comments, uh, one from the City of Medina, um, and then the, um, we had verbal comments with Hennepin County and Mindot, um, and then you can see the list of the other comments that we, uh, that we got back but had no comment on the plan. We did meet with Metropolitan Council once during the process to go over the plan, talk about certain elements of the plan. Some of the points of emphasis that we do expect comments on, because I've seen them on every plan that we've submitted, um, the affordable housing is a, is a big issue that the Metropolitan Council is really trying to push communities to, um, providing very specific, uh, uh, goals, objectives, and, and, uh, implementation on how we're gonna achieve affordable housing. Many of the tools that the Metropolitan Council is touting that we, um, proclaim to be utilizing, we don't have in place, so it's gonna be interesting to see how those comments come back. Um, from the Metropolitan Council, the other area of emphasis that I've seen in the plans is I and I. Maple Plain knows about its I and I, so I do fully expect, we have addressed it in the plan, but I do fully expect we're gonna probably get some pushback on that in the plan review comments. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We did hold a public hearing at Planning Commission, we had no, uh, no one come in and make comments at Planning Commission. Planning Commissioners did provide some comments, uh, back on the plan, and many of those comments have either been addressed or are in the process of being addressed in that final, kinda final edit.
Any questions for our planner regarding the town plan?
Mark, I thought I saw in here that, um, Highway twelve expectant, that the increase in traffic is only expected to be one percent, I, but I can't find it in here, not to direct you to the page, but it seems very low by twenty forty with the growth out west, that we're only gonna see one percent increase on twelve.
Yeah, I could, um, I, I don't know off the top of my head the percentage, I, I'll just pull up the figure. Um, so, this, this figure, um, shows traffic counts, proposed and existing on Highway twelve. I'll zoom in and try to get there. Um, so, I mean, existing traffic is black, proposed is red. You can see we're at sixteen-eight out on the west end of the city, going up to twenty-one three, eighteen in the middle, going up to twenty-two nine. Um, and then do we have, oh, shoot, this is my technology gap. Uh, I don't see the count on the very west side, but, so, I, it's probably not that far off. I don't think our projected traffic going through, um, going through downtown here on Highway twelve goes up significantly. It does, the more west you go, the more it does increase, but then there's more places for that traffic to start to split off-
Sure.
...um, as it comes east or, or west, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you, Mark.
Sure.
Um, the Pioneer Sarah Creek, Minnehaha, and Medina comments were not part of this packet, is that correct?
Um, so Medina just came in in between Planning Commission and now, the, the comments were in the Planning Commission packet for Pioneer and, uh, Minnehaha Creek. I apologize if they're not, yeah.
I couldn't find them in here.
Okay.
Um, and being part of Pioneer, I was just curious to find out what, what Pioneer had to-
They were, I think they were-
It's okay. You're, you're, it's addressed. Whatever they've, whatever they've done, you've addressed, okay?
Yeah, the primary comments were from Minnehaha, and they were, they were more technical-based comments on some of the elements-
They got a bigger budget.
-of our local water management plan, yeah.
Um, uh, and a couple of the things were, had to do with blank pages and things of that nature, so it sounds like you're very well aware, gonna make the corrections on that.
We've edited it now, I mean, maybe four or five times, but I'm, I'm to a point now where I don't wanna renumber everything until I'm done.
Well, and it was this way the last time we looked at it, too.
Yeah.
So, the, you know, the fi- figures weren't, pictures and things weren't in there, so...
Yeah, most figures should be in. If there's blank pages, um, it's just a formatting as to how, we, we haven't decided yet. In the last plan set, we had, um, we had a blank page that represented a figure, and we left it, it was in the, the document, and then we've talked about whether to take those out because they're confusing.
Yeah, 'cause there's, there's a section where there's ten pages of, of blank document that looks like it should have something in it.
And they do have those, it's just after that, though.
I understand.
Yeah.
Um, on the local service, uh, water management plan?
Yes.
Did you, did you include our new well in, uh, your calculations?
Oh, you're testing me.
Um, 'cause when, as I was reading, it was like, our goal is to fill the well, and I just wanted to make sure that we've got that water capacity in our, uh, in our local management plan.
I will, uh, I, I will check. I don't wanna misspeak on that. My assumption is it's in, but you're right on that language, I think we did talk about that.
Well, ten years ago, it was a grand plan to get a, to get another well up. Well, the well is up and running, and running successfully. Just wanna make sure that they're part of your water calculations.
Yeah, and as far as the calculations go, yes, that could be in, just a text issue-
Okay.
-in how we described it, but, um, I'll respond, I'll, I'll send an email to Bobby, and you can get out to the council with an answer to that.
And then, we made a recent, by recent, I mean, within the past forty-five days, I think, to the fee schedule for water access and sewer access and stuff, just wanna make sure that, that your tables reflect the most current, um, fee schedule numbers.
Sure.
That's it.
Good. Yeah, those are great comments, thank you.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Uh, Mark, this is excellent work, and I know the amount of effort you've put in to this document over the last year.
Yes.
It's incredible amount of work that you do, so thank you for that. Um, I think you make references in here to Northside Park.
Yeah.
Do you wanna update those to Veterans Memorial?
Yeah, we were trying to find them all, but we-
There's still a couple of them.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
Page numbers would be helpful.
That was a, uh, that was a mid-plan change.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe you need a tech consultant to help you automate those kinda things.
Do you know anybody?
I might.
I would really like.
We all know.
That would be great, actually, Caitlin, so you may be getting an email. Here you go. No, that's great.
Any further questions for Mark? All right, well, this is our resolution, um, vote.
Uh, Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Shouldn't we have a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
That would help.
Looking for a motion to approve Resolution nineteen dash zero six two four dash zero one, approving the twenty forty comprehensive plan.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong.
Councilmember Cahill.
Still aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Eyes have it five to zero.
Thanks, Mark.
Nice work.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Um, next item of new business is another resolution, and this is Resolution nineteen dash zero six two four dash zero two, appointing election judges for a special election.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, this coming, uh, August thirteenth, we do have a special election, um, and by state law, we are required to appoint election judges to help, uh, run that election. Uh, this year, we have, uh, um, Nettie Boy, uh, Nettie Tempe, Karen Grandstand, Denny Grinnell, Joe Jacobs, Trudy Lumberman, Connie Francis, myself, Sharon Spicer, and Gary McPherson with the head judge, um, head election judge being David Begar, and, uh, election judges would receive, uh, ten dollars an hour, and the head election judge receives eleven dollars an hour. This is all standard practice for what we've done in the past. Um, and then, there's one stipulation that if need be, we need to add any, uh, additional election judges, if the city administrator has, uh, the empowerment to do so. That's really what this whole resolution's about, uh, by state law, we are required to do that. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, uh, looking for a motion to approve, uh, re- Resolution nineteen dash zero six two four oh two, appointing election judges for the special election.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Fay and his resolution vote again.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
Next item of new business is purchase agreement between Elam and the City of Maple Plain.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before you is a purchase agreement, and it looks pretty familiar to a purchase agreement that you may have looked at a few months ago. Um, as you're aware, that the city did approve a purchase agreement very similar to this in February, um, but there was one stipulation that happened in February, around that time in March. Um, we had some, uh, proposed po- potential legislation that would've had an impact on, um, our project, that would've been happening in the Gateway Boulevard. Um, the good news is, is that no such legislation played a large enough impact to prevent this project from happening, but what it did do is it pushed us beyond our date, uh, our dates that we had set for obligations for the buyer, um, or for the seller, I'm sorry. And, uh, we, as that, uh, as those dates were coming up, we actually exited the last purchase agreement. We had to do so because we wouldn't be able to meet our obligations. And so, before you now is a very similar purchase agreement. The only change really that is in here is that all of the, it makes note of the closing date, which should be held on, uh, July twenty-fifth of this year. Um, it also talks about buyer's obligations and seller's obligations, and all of those have built-in timeframes for information that we have to provide for, um, really the closing date to happen. And so, um, that's what is reflected in the change in this purchase agreement, otherwise everything is the same, the price is the same, um, nothing changed, just the date of which, of which the obligations are, which reflect their closing date of July 25th of 2019. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the purchase agreement.
Any questions for staff regarding the purchase agreement? Okay. With that, looking for a motion to approve purchase agreement between Elam and the City of Maple Plain. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion.
I move.
We need a purchase.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the purchase agreement between Elam Care and the City of Maple Plain.
Moved by Councilmember Fay, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. And we do not need roll call vote, correct?
Just all in favor.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries.
Perfect.
Next item of business is Resolution 19-0624-03, a resolution approving the request by Elam Care Incorporated, Augustana Care, to extend the timeframe for the recording of the final plat.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is a resolution that really ties back to a resolution that was approved last July of 2018, where the city approved the preliminary and final plat. As that's happening, we do have a Sydney ordinance that in that resolution, under Section 5, this is a Resolution 18071602, that states that the applicant shall record the final plat and associated documents within 100 days of the date of City Council approval. Well, we are way past 180 days from last July. Part of the reason why that plat and some of those documents haven't been approved is just because we haven't hit the closing date yet. And that closing date is, as was mentioned in the purchase agreement, is July 25th of 2019. So what you have before you is a resolution that extends that recording time period, and it extends them to September 20th of 2019, which is just a buffer date in there. Really, it should be filed right at closing, at the July 25th time. And that's what we have to do is by extension, or by resolution, provide that extension with our CD code saying 180 days. So that's what we're looking at here. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this resolution.
Any questions for staff? Okay. With that, looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-0624-03.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill.
Councilmember DeLong.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Aye.
Oh, my God.
I thought you thought I was raising my hand because I was, sorry. Aye.
Makes me nervous.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Eyes have it five to zero.
Stick to the order.
Never know. Got to keep us on our toes. All right. That is it for new business this evening. Next, we'll move on to council reports and other business. We'll start with Councilmember Fay.
You know, I'm not prepared to say anything.
Wow. Okay. Move on, or that? Councilmember Cahill.
Okay. I met with the Planning Commission, where we did a final review of the comp plan. So thank you again, Mark, for all your work. I also attended the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce, and I attended the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, subbing for the mayor, where we got a lovely legislative update from the league. And then I also was at the Party in the Park, which was huge success. So congrats to those of you who worked so hard to put it on.
Councilmember DeLuca.
No report.
Councilmember DeLong.
I was also at Party at the Park. Nice job, everybody who was involved. And that is all.
Awesome. I had a few meetings this month. I was able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce, and have been able to attend Rotary meetings as well. And I was able to attend the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed District. And this morning, I had a District III meeting with Congressman Dean Phillips. So it was really neat just to see the bipartisan work and just listening to representatives from all 36 cities come together. And there's something very powerful in that, and in the relationships built and the network in doing that. And then everyone's been busy with workshops and EDA, and then as well, wanted to thank the Rotary and the city for the Party in the Park event and everyone who came out. We had a beautiful day, great attendance. And we are looking for the Rotary to make a presentation in July, as they're still revving things up. So we're grateful for that. And want to encourage everyone to mark your calendars, save the date for Friday, July 26th. That is our next city event, which will be a movie in the park. So stay tuned for the movie. I'm not even sure what won the vote, but movie in the park will be July 26th. All right. Any other reports or other business from anyone? With that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember DeLuca.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The meeting's adjourned at 7:54.
It could have gone way longer.